How about that? There we go. We'll call the special meeting -- oh, my phone is on. Turn it off. We'll call the special meeting of the Transportation Committee to order. And we have a quorum with Mr. Labonge, Mr. Weisar, and myself.
And if we could start with our one item, item number one.
Item number one is a resolution, Weisar Reyes Garcetti, relative to the city's position to oppose the extension of the north Long Beach 710 freeway along the alternatives H2, H6, F2, F5, and F6, and any above-ground highway or freeway that would cut through the city of Los Angeles.
And if we could start with DOT staff, like, walking us through this.
Mr. Chair, is there anyone from Metro here? They were invited.
I would hope someone would be here from Metro, but I -- are they here? Great.
Yes, fortunately, we do have somebody here from Metro. I'm Ken Husting with LA DOT.
Build or Babs, Metro.
And we're here to speak about the SR710 summary of results, alternative analysis. And I think what I would probably be most prudent is to just go ahead and let Metro give an update as far as where they are, and then we can answer specific questions.
Please.
Great. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today to give you an update on the SR710 environmental project, or the environmental study in alternatives. Metro staff is working in conjunction with Caltrans and is recommending that the list of alternatives being studied for the SR710 north-south connection from Alhambra to Pasadena be paired from 12 to 5 for further environmental study based on operational, engineering, financial, and environmental considerations, as well as public input. Among the alternatives that would not continue are service route options for Avenue 64 and San Rafael, or underground in the Mount Washington area, or any surface highway options in those corridors. The multimodal options Metro is recommending go forward for further review include expanded bus rapid transit, light rail, a freeway tunnel, an alternative focused on expanded bus service, intersection and hotspot improvements, ride-sharing and telecommuting, and intelligent technology system improvements, and a no-build option. These recommendations will be presented on August 29th to the Technical Advisory Committee comprised of more than 30 engineering and other technical experts representing jurisdictions throughout the region who are working with Metro and its consultants on the SR710 environmental study. At the meeting, the performance criteria for culling the list of alternatives for further environmental study will be reviewed. The four alternatives plus the no-build option will be further refined through the environmental phase, which should be completed by the winter of 2014. The public will be actively involved in the process, as it has been since the SR710 environmental study began earlier this year. And that concludes my update.
Thank you.
Can you answer any questions? But just real quickly, I think what I'll do is, as you may be aware, the 710 originally started off with, I think, over 100 conceptual alternatives, was whittled down to 42 alternatives, then 12, and now 5. And so the five alternatives, I think, are very much consistent, at least with the motion that is going forward, which are opposing highway alternatives, as well as some freeway alternatives that would be devastating to the El Cerrino community. So I think what's going forward is worth more evaluation. LA DOT has not taken a formal stance on any of the alternatives that are going forward. We're still waiting for more information and study on those various alternatives.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Weisar? Mr. Labonge?
All right. Give me the listing of the five, if you would, please.
The five that are being considered are a no-build option, bus rapid transit with refinements, light rail transit, a freeway tunnel, transportation system management, and smart transportation technology as well. So those are the five.
Have you studied tunneling? MTA?
Would you repeat that, Councilman?
Have you studied tunneling?
Yes.
Because significant highways throughout the world are tunnelled now that do not break up neighborhoods, which I don't think we have done enough of studying on, in that sense. But you feel confident that's a good option?
Very confident.
And then, and trucks could go or not go through the tunnels?
From what I understand, trucks are limited, from a limited capacity.
Limited loads, limited loads?
Correct.
Like, if there are fuel, they couldn't go, but if they're --
Correct. What is consistent with, you know, federal guidelines as it relates to trucks moving through tunnels?
Yeah, for that Oakland situation of years back. All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Weisar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for hosting this committee meeting today. And I do want to apologize to some of the committee members who are here. On Friday, we had to move this because we felt that not enough information had been circulated to the council members so that they fully understand what the information is before us. We typically have these issues go before committee. We had waived this one, and now we're fully vetting it so that we have all the information before us when we get back to full council tomorrow. But for Metro, why do you think there was a need to have all these number of alternatives, up to, how many were there, 42? Why couldn't you have started with a more narrow number of alternatives? Why so many, and to go out to so many communities when, realistically, when we voted for the EARR to move forward in the Metro Board, kind of seemed like everyone except me and you that all those alternatives weren't even realistic and weren't going to be considered?
Well, from my understanding, Councilman, I believe that they wanted to just give a very thorough examination and look at all possibilities that would be able to meet the needs as it relates to correcting the modal situation in that particular community. It started large. It was thought that there would be as many opportunities as possible for the public to weigh in, and for all resources to be available to, for the decision to be made. So although 42 seems to be a large number, they thought that it was prudent to look at all alternatives and give it, I guess, a forum in order for it to be discussed, for us to get to the point where it is now.
Okay. Now, we are at the five options that are being recommended. Where do we go from here? Who decides the ultimate route? Is it Metro? Is it Caltrans? And what's the process?
Process is now going forward to the Technical Advisory Committee. It's a group of at least 40 individuals that, you know, will make assessments. That will include continued focus groups and public meetings. So there will be engagement with the public as it relates to continuing the evaluation process. We're probably, I would say, about a quarter way into the process before any environmental document itself is presented. So there's no single entity as it relates to Metro or Caltrans, but it will be collective with the public involved in order to make an assessment to move forward to the next phase, which would involve a draft environmental document being put together.
So everyone, there's input from everyone, but does it go back to the MTA board for final approval on the final route?
There will be a phase in which the board will have input, but I cannot say that the board will have the final or ultimate decision on this. It will be something that will be, again, a collective decision between all the --
And first, the EARR.
Yeah. When it comes to the EARR itself, it'll be something that will go to the MTA board for approval. But that will be, again, after a very thorough process amongst, you know, involving public input and meetings and --
And then it goes to Caltrans?
Yes.
And then, and they have the ultimate say. Is that accurate?
I would imagine so, in that, again, this is, it is a state highway, and with, again, the input coming from Metro and coming from the collective process, Caltrans will move forward with those recommendations.
Okay. And Pasadena recently took action, some action. Now, it's my understanding that they actually opposed certain routes, but that they left open the possibility of above-ground and a tunnel. Is that accurate?
The tunnel, well, the above-ground options, again, that we're moving forward with, involve, again, light rail, bus rapid transit, again, a no-build option, and smart technology in the corridor, and a tunnel as well. So those are the options that we're recommending we go forward with.
Yeah. But do you know what, are you familiar with Pasadena's, City of Pasadena's action recently and their city council and what they did?
I'm not familiar with their action.
And DOT, are you familiar with what they did?
Unfortunately, I'm not, no.
Okay. That's all for now, Mr. Chair, and I have more questions, but I'll reserve those.
Mr. Chair, believe it or not, I have three committees this morning. If there's any amendments, I'd like to support them at any time that would help further the cause of what the interest of the majority of the committee is. Thank you.
Okay.
Call me back if you need my vote from the --
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I have just a couple quick questions. One is, I understand that, and I'm not totally familiar with this project, I'll be honest, but I understand that one of the driving forces is increased truck traffic that we're considering this for. So I'm wondering if we looked at truck-related options, like expanding the Alameda Corridor and enhancing some of our existing freeways, as other options to handle this that might be less disruptive?
That's something, Councilman, that can be examined. I don't specifically have information based on, again, I'm not with the project, the 710 project team, but I can take that recommendation back in terms of looking at some of those types of alternatives that you mentioned.
Councilman, but I do know that in early on, they did look at different alternatives, at least they talked about light rail as well as heavy rail opportunities. But from an early timeline, I think they eliminated that option because it was not so much a focus to carry container traffic. And so, you know, they are, they do seem to be focused more on travel times, I think, as it relates to automobiles. And there is concern about truck traffic, but it's not as heavy a concern as it is for the other modes of transportation.
So does the truck traffic not impact the automobile traffic?
There's still an impact of truck traffic. It's not nearly as significant as the automobile traffic. But they're also looking at various other objectives, as far as, does it improve transit travel time? What is the impact to the community, environmental effects, impacts? So it's a number of different criteria they look at, and unfortunately, the heavy rail just did not, I guess, play to the top as far as the greatest need or concern.
And do, do all these proposals, other than the no project, wind up taking out homes and dividing communities, or are there any that don't do that?
It's very difficult to me to say at this time, since it's so early in the process. Obviously, a tunnel would not destroy as many or any, I really can't say where the tunnel ventilation shafts would be, where the portals would be at this time. But that one seems to be less disruptive than obviously some of the highway and freeway above-ground facilities that were being looked at. Whenever you do something above ground, you're going to rip apart communities, you're going to divide communities, especially in South Pasadena. And so I believe, based on some of those concerns, different alternatives were eliminated. Obviously, we're concerned about the city of LA and the residents of El Cerrino. Even with a tunnel alternative, you know, there's still concerns that we have as far as, you know, detours, construction, ventilation shafts, air quality. But definitely above-ground would have made a big difference to the communities. It would have ripped them apart.
Okay. Well, we have a number of speakers, so I think I'm going to hear from members of the public now. What do you think about climate? Can we get away with two minutes? There's a stack. Okay. All right. We'll hear from the public, and although we have a pretty big stack, we'll allow two minutes per speaker, but we'll ask if you can, if you can finish up, and less than that, we'll be, we'll be happy, and that'll help move it along. So we'll begin with Dr. Tom Williams, to be followed by Tina Gulata Miller.
Dr. Tom Williams, LA 32 Neighborhood Council Board Member, Land Use Committee Chair, and 30-year owner-occupant in El Cerrino. We've seen it all before. However, the new phase is no public participation in the selection of all of the alternatives, from the scoping report to present. No public participation until now. Okay. I've already submitted a letter and a recommended friendly amendments to the current resolution. Basically, the 2009 resolution had more teeth in it than this one does. F7. What did they do with F7? They redefined the concept of portal. The usual definition of portal is from the changing grade of existing pavement to the entrance of the board tunnel. Well, they then added cut-and-cover tunnel. Well, even before looking at it, I had already eliminated that as part of the friendly amendments. The basic element is that this will do damage to El Cerrino and adjacent parts of Alhambra City. If you want to see a video, look at the video of the Alaskan Way, Big Dig for Seattle, that's going on right now. It'll take over a year just to get the tip for the 500-foot-long tunnel, the boring machine. For ours, we're going to have two tunnels. So it's going to be a hole in the ground, 250 feet across, maybe 80 or more feet deep just to get the sucker in. So we're talking about a lot of damage, a lot of construction effects for over five years, because the tunnel portal is the start of the tunneling machine path, and it has to go for a long distance, five miles. Then it turns around and comes back. So we're quite concerned about this. We thought we had it resolved in 2009, but then somebody recognized that there's no ordinance to support the resolution. So, oh, by the way, I have planned, designed, built tunnels, including the first phase of Red Line Phase 1, under here. And, yeah, I know quite a bit about tunnels. I love tunnels, but I don't love this one because it's the wrong tunnel in the wrong place. Thank you.
Thank you, God.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, Kenny, could you at the sound, get the clock running there? Thanks. Got a little extra time.
Wake up. I can go on for hours if you want. I believe it's been two minutes, so thank you. Actually, I'm going to have the next speaker be our council colleague, Ed Reyes, who, so we'd like to hear his opinion on this issue. And after that, it'll be Tina Miller.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the opportunity, and I want to thank all the folks that are here that made the trip to City Hall. I appreciate your support. Councilman Weisar, myself, have a track record of essentially supporting, good planning, sound transportation policy. The options and type of body of work that's here in front of us does not reflect either. We should be focused on what's best for our communities. I oppose all of the different options that have laid out. I want to be consistent with our actions in 2009. So again, I want to thank the staff for their diligence and their hard work, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for this opportunity to be able to address the body, and again, thank the community for their hard work in supporting our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Now Tina Gulata Miller, to be followed by Gretchen Knudsen.
Good morning, City Council, Transportation Committee. Appreciate you taking our comments. I live in Garbanza. May 30th, Metro announced at a CLC meeting at the Rose Bowl in Pasadena. These new alternative routes, one of them being Avenue 64, another one being the F5 freeway tunnel, east of Garbanza. Anyway, the five zones had disappeared, and a whole different set of routes, the 12 alternatives, had suddenly appeared. May 31st, some emails had gone out into the community. Nobody was aware that any outreach had been done. The Spanish-speaking community had no idea, nothing in Spanish on the website. The Mandarin community had no idea, nothing on the website. Chinese community, Cantonese, had no idea, nothing on the website. We banded together, and we launched some Facebook pages in the last three weeks and a Twitter feed, and we've gained over 1,600 followers from Pasadena, South Pasadena, San Rafael, San Francisco, Central California, San Diego, and a lot of the communities, Hermann, Montecito Heights, Mount Washington. And we have been having a forum on Facebook to discuss the outreach and what this is going to do to impact our communities. We've learned a lot in three weeks. We haven't been at this for 50 years, like some other communities, but we have a lot of knowledge, in which we have submitted the no 710 freeway extension, a briefing to this committee over the weekend. We hope you use the summary, and you'll read it. Our concerns about what you're proposing and the lack of proposals in public communication in being part of the process has not happened.
Thank you. Gretchen Knudsen.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to committee, but you know where I am, Sergeant. If you want to call me if you need me for anything. Thank you.
We will do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge.
Hi, Gretchen Knudsen. I'm speaking today not only as a resident in CD1, but I also, just for background, I've worked on transportation and trucking issues and environmental issues for most of my career. I also have an MBA and an engineering degree. I came into the first community meeting three weeks ago and was shocked to see the public process that was taking place and the lack of technical information. I approached Metro, and they actually told me they had done no quantitative analysis on any of these proposals. This had all been qualitative, which means they hadn't actually applied numbers. They are, just recently, after I showed them the numbers I applied to their own analysis, they have applied numbers in their upcoming TAC that will be presented on Wednesday. My concern is, we've got a flawed process, and this process is driving towards some really big budget numbers. The cost estimates for the tunnel have gone as high as $14 billion. Our state deficit right now is $19 billion. As anybody knows, with any construction project, there's always overruns. This is on a fast track to disaster if the electeds don't pay attention. We are still putting Metro staff before us that, with all due respect, have not provided answers, are not even clear on their own process. And what we're attaching are huge budget figures that are not only going to impact the communities, I'm, yes, people in communities in El Cerrino will be impacted, but my concern is the state's going to be impacted. And also, there are a lot of people that are really concerned about the fiscal implications and are willing to launch a campaign against Measure J. So right now, until there's better public process, more public participation, more increased scrutiny of the technical analysis, there needs to be a better process, or whatever comes out of this is going to be flawed, and it's putting us on the fast track towards possibly a huge financial disaster. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanne Knuckles, to be followed by Nancy Campu. And my apologies if I'm mangling your names.
Well, thank you for the opportunity. I'm here, Joanne Knuckles, I'm a resident of South Pasadena, been a freeway fighter for over 20 years. I'm here representing the No 710 Action Committee. Our committee is a grassroots organization with members from the northeast area of Los Angeles and surrounding communities, including Alhambra, Eagle Rock, El Cerrino, Highland Park, Glassell Park, Glendale, La Crocena, La Conyata, Los Angeles, Pasadena, and South Pasadena. Our group is comprised of residents, as well as business and health professionals from diverse backgrounds and communities who are committed to improving transportation modes across and within the county. Our members include community organizers and activists, engineers, elected officials, scientists, economists, physicians, and other healthcare professionals. Cities, neighborhood councils, and groups that have taken official positions against any SR710 extension represent over 500,000 people. Now with this new activity, I'm sure we're up to 600,000. I want to let you know that your resolution is, and the one from 2009, is a start, but it does not go far enough. The impacts of the F7 tunnel, and particularly the impacts at the portals in El Cerrino and Pasadena are devastating, and I think that there has been little to no information about those impacts at the TAC level or any level of Metro, and none of that information has come out from the consultants. There is an injunction in place against this project since 1973. It was renewed in 1999, and it is still in place. So I think you have a serious problem here, and you need to look at that. And the reasons for the injunction were air quality, which are even going to be worse with the portal, historic preservation, and a failure to look at alternatives.
Thank you. Nancy Campu, to be followed by Don Justin Jones.
Good morning, committee. My name is Nancy Campu, and I brought my friends with me. I'm one of the three founding members of United Against 710. The group, you may remember that in 2009, gathered over 3,000 signatures in less than a month and demanded protection from the city against the 710 North Extension. Our efforts resulted in the council hearing our concerns and passing Mr. Weisar's resolution in 2009 against the 710. Until the 710 North Extension sees a final demise, our members remain ever watchful and now are joined by very many new friends, the latest of whom are from San Rafael and Garbanza, and they are as determined as we are to stand united against the 710 anywhere in northeast Los Angeles. Mr. Weisar, it seems to us that your proposed resolution only weakens the 2009 resolution, and we ask that you postpone tomorrow's vote on the resolution. The new resolution itself becomes rather moot point because of Metro's recent cuts of our routes listed in your resolution. The only effect it has is to weaken the city's protection of the El Cerrino neighborhood. And we also ask that, instead of another resolution, that you work with the city attorney to create ordinances that will give real teeth to the existing resolution. And finally, we ask that you rescind all prior agreements that the city made with Caltrans or Metro regarding the SR710. These go back to the 1960s. There are many reasons to do this, and suffice it to say here, that conditions have changed since those agreements were made. And so we ask that you look at these agreements and rescind them. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Don Justin Jones, followed by John Schaefer.
Excuse me, Mr. Officer, before I begin and before my time starts to tick, can I confirm that everyone here has received a copy of this audit?
Yeah.
Because I'd like to refer to it during my remarks, if I may.
Please.
Thank you so much. I'd first of all like to thank you for this opportunity. I'd like to call your attention by way of introduction to page number 72, down at the bottom. It's a timeframe. It says, "In March 1995, community activists from El Cerrino filed an environmental justice complaint alleging discrimination in El Cerrino." It's followed by another footnote where we claimed environmental racism back in 1995. Now, some of the members here were not even, well, were probably still in school back in 1995, just as a way of annotating how long we've been at this. Then I'd like to call your attention to page number 76 of this, which comprises a map showing the route of the 710 freeway through our community. Then I'd like to call your attention to page, Chapter 3, page 43, where it said, "General Service cannot justify the fees it charges and has not provided oversight." I'm concerned because the pattern of what -- I'm concerned because of the pattern of what Daniel Patrick Moynihan called benign neglect. I'm concerned because the number of evictions that have taken place of Caltrans tenants since 1995, when we've been monitoring this. I'm concerned because there's not one council member on this council that can show me one letter to the Department of Transportation expressing outrage, concern, or interest in any of the evictions that have taken place in my community. When you drive through my community, you'll find mattresses out on the street like broken teeth, memorandums of people who've been evicted. There are 80,000 evictions in Los Angeles County this year. One out of 13 minority women will be put on the street this year. You know it when you see it, when you drive down the street, you see the mattresses, kids coloring books there, you know another family's been put out on the street. Why is it that the state allows this to happen? This is an indictment of public housing, and no one on this council has taken a stand, not Mr. Huizar nor his predecessors, going all the way back, all the way back, to Art Snyder. Not one of you has taken an interest. Take a look at this and use it as a basis for calling for an investigation by the California Attorney General into the fraud and misuse of your funds. Thank you so much for your interest.
Thank you. John Schaefer, followed by Michael Carrion.
Hello, my name is John Schaefer. I'm a representative of the San Rafael Neighborhoods Association in Pasadena. We do support the resolution that is on the table, but with a couple of caveats. First of all, we see it as only a first step. The full action of this council should be to oppose all 710 freeway and highway routes. Our second concern with the resolution is that, and I believe Mr. Williams alluded to this earlier, is that Metro and Caltrans have changed the definition of a tunnel on you. In their speak, a tunnel includes a cover and cut-and-cover section, which involves digging a very large trench, building the freeway, and then covering it up with dirt. It's extremely disruptive to the neighborhood while it happens, and what Metro has given you in the latest memorandum blends both true tunnels that are actually bored under the surface and cut-and-cover tunnels. And Metro has yet to commit that it will not do a cut-and-cover tunnel through the El Sereno area or through other neighborhoods. And we believe it's very important that the city of council get that commitment. But even with the bored tunnel, this is not any tunnel. This tunnel will be, by volume, more than 11 times larger than Metro red-line tunnels, and there will be two of them. The amount of dirt that will come out of these tunnels and the amount of disruption upon the communities while they are being built is dramatic, and Metro has yet to address those issues. There was a discussion earlier about whether Metro has addressed freight issues, and the answer is no, absolutely not. Metro did not study improvements to the Alameda Corridor for freight, and what we have now are two studies of the 710, the south and the north going on, and they're like two left feet. The south study is all about trucks and moving goods, and the north study purports to do nothing about moving goods. They make no sense, and this city council needs to act to put Metro in the right direction.
Thank you. Michael Carrion, followed by Andrew Toestal.
Thank you. Someone said earlier that we're here today because we didn't have enough time to go through all of this. This tunnel's been on proposal for over 40 years. How is it you don't have time to go through this? Oh, maybe it's because our council member's not representing us at any of these meetings. His staff is not there at any of these meetings. I don't know how many of you people see him there, but I don't. Number two, you guys keep saying that this tunnel ends, or this freeway ends in Alhambra. According to the city maps, this freeway ends in Los Angeles. Get it right. El Sereno is the one that's going to be affected, no matter which way this tunnel goes or freeway goes or anything. Yet, we are the least to be involved. We are the last to be notified. This reminds me of the Alvera Street when Mr. Huizar was out of town. His staff tried to put something through at the last minute. We're asking you to stop doing this stuff at the last minute, Mr. Huizar. Get involved from the beginning, like you do at Bring Back Broadway. Get involved with the stuff that happens in my community, and all these people are asking you for representation. We've had over 35 new staff members in El Sereno, and half of them don't know what they're doing from the beginning. They say, "I don't know where to go." And then by the time they get started, you transfer them somewhere else. Okay? This is something that's been going on for 40 or 50 years. For you to tell me that you didn't know something tells me you weren't involved. So, we're asking you, as community members, this last-minute ploy to save face and say, "I'm against this," it's just unfair. We are not blind and we are not dumb. We see what's going on here, and I think it's time for us to take it to our vote.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, for the record, when I opened my comments, my comments about us not being familiar, that was my other council members who were not familiar with the issue and they wanted more information before they took a vote.
Thank you. Next speaker is Andrew Toestal, followed by Michael Oropesa. Michael Oropesa, followed by Iris Dianda.
Hi, my name's Michael Oropesa, and I'm a lifelong resident of El Sereno. What I don't understand, if Alhambra is so adamant about having this extension built, why doesn't Alhambra sacrifice their space, their real estate? You know? Like the gentleman before, El Sereno has been long neglected, always been taken advantage, and it's time to stop this. And again, if Alhambra is the one who wants, Pasadena's against it, South Pass is against it, El Sereno's against it, many communities are against it. If Alhambra wants a tunnel or the extension, they have to sacrifice their space, their real estate.
Iris Dianda, followed by Rosa Rivas.
Hello, thank you for your time. I'm a resident of El Sereno. I've been there all of my life. This 710 extension has actually been in the works since before I was born, and I'm just here to say that I'm against all 710 extensions. By the time you complete a project of this magnitude, it will be irrelevant. New generations seek sustainable alternatives to transportation that are in tune with the environment, and we ask that all 710 extensions be stopped now. Many houses in the El Sereno community have been left vacant, and we ask that Caltrans, you know, comes forth and revises this error. I'm part of the El Sereno Bungalows Collective, and we're in the process of reclaiming the bungalows on May Crest that have been abandoned since the 80s, and we want to turn them into a community space. Just one of the many houses and places along the route that have been left vacant and have been places for vandalism and other things that our community no longer needs. So, no on the 710, no build options, no tunnel. Thank you.
Thank you. Rosa Rivas, followed by Pamela Marquez.
Good morning, City Council. This message is for Metro. Can you please turn around and look at me? The way you guys advertise to the Latino community, it is unacceptable. People did not know what you guys were talking about. The Chinese people, they were crying, they were knocking at my, they were asking me what the heck was going on. I had to do your translation in my community, which is not fair. I don't get the big bucks like you guys do. It is unacceptable that you guys come to our community and did what you did. It took us three weeks. I had to learn stuff that I never knew about highways and things like that. But you, and you, and the other lady, Michelle Smith, you guys never give a straight answer. So, please, when you come to our communities, come well prepared, because we will be there, and we are not going to let you do this to us anymore. Thank you.
Pamela Marquez, followed by Val Marquez.
Yes, my name's Pamela Marquez. I am the co-founder of Concerned Neighbors of El Sereno, and I just want to say, I love seeing the young man that came up here to say, "No710," because they're the ones we're fighting for. Sure, we want to protect our homes, but we want to protect the environment for the future of our children, and we need to get it right. If we make mistakes here, they're the ones who suffer, so we need to leave a good legacy for our communities. So now I want to address the resolution that's being considered. While I appreciate the attempt to protect our communities, it's not enough. We need to ensure that any action the council takes, first of all, doesn't supersede what this council already passed in 2009, that any portal will begin and end south of Valley Boulevard. Although, I have to say that, at this point, I'm totally against any extension of the 710 in any form. It just doesn't make sense to spend $14 billion on a five-mile gap. It's just ridiculous. The environmental impacts, it will destroy many communities. I also want to say that I hope that in the consideration of any no-build alternatives, that the alternative to bring a connector road into residential communities is completely off the table. That's been tried before many times, and it would be devastating to our community, whether it goes a few feet into Alhambra or whether it comes straight into El Sereno. It would still devastate our community. And so, I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Val Marquez, followed by Josefina Cornejo.
My name is Val Marquez. I am co-founder or founder of Concerned Neighbors of El Sereno. I'm also on the ALI 32 Neighborhood Council. You know, I'm just going to be brief. No matter what Metro or Caltrans decides to try to put forward, we're affected big time. I mean, you're constantly coming up with alternatives, and every time you come up with an alternative, we get the bun of it. You try to connect the road, you know, we got together and we stopped it. You try to portal in the residential, and luckily, City Council passed a resolution. Now, this is coming back to us with other alternatives. You had, they had 42 alternatives. Now they have 12. Now, possibly, they want to pull the 12. Are we going back to 42? I think it's time that we stop this process. So furthermore, I just want to end this. I urge you, resolve this once and for all. Take a position against the extension of the 710 freeway north in any form. As the only alternatives, to terminate this project and mitigate the traffic on the existing freeways and not into our communities. And one other thing, I also support Dr. Williams' resolution, or, friendly amendment. Sorry for being a little tight, but this pisses me off.
Josefina Cornejo, to be followed by Jenny Guerrero.
Hello, my name is Josefina Cornejo, and I am a resident of El Sereno, and I'm speaking about, I'm speaking in regards to, I'm sorry, I'm nervous. I don't want the 710 to be constructed in El Sereno. There is a lot of difficulties for us. It's going to be health problems, it's going to be a lot, a lot of problems with, in El Please don't do it.
Thank you. Jenny Guerrero, followed by Ruben Chavez.
My name is Jenny Guerrero. I would just like to say that I'm in support of Councilman Huizar's resolution. We would not like the 710 to be tunnelled through El Sereno. We would like more information from the MTA to be brought to our community. It seems to be that the other communities surrounding us seem to know more about what's going on and what's going to happen in our community than we do, and we would just like more information. Thank you.
Thank you. Ruben Chavez, followed by Marie Salas.
Good morning, council persons and the Committee for Transportation. My name's Ruben Chavez, I was born in Hollenbeck area, and during the early 60s, I bought a house on Lowell and Poplar in that general area, thinking that I knew about the freeway coming in, and the buzzword was that the bulldozers are about ready to start bulldozing everything within minutes. As you see, it's been quite a few years, almost half a century since that. You know, we might as well call El Sereno and change their name to Azusa, you know, because of where Azusa is and the smog is over there, and whatever happens here, if that tunnel goes up, we're going to get all that exhaust there from the escape thing that they're going to have. But anyway, I think that it was unfair to jump on our councilman, Jose Huizar, because he inherited this. If he was like this gentleman with a white t-shirt, was claiming, was not on top of it, he wouldn't be sitting where he is, and he wouldn't be involved in this committee and trying his darndest to see that El Sereno doesn't get punctured up, you know, as people think that he's just sitting in his laurels, okay? He's really working, and that's why he took up and manned up and got him the place where he's at. Okay, so I think we all need to cut him some slack and work with him so he can get the best deal that's possible going to be gotten, because this thing is probably written in stone, on beyond his powers and his influence. So, he's in there pitching in to see that we don't really get the shot as bad as we're going to get it, okay? So, I've owned several properties in El Sereno. I'm a board member of the Neighborhood Council there. I had the highest numbers of people to vote for me compared to the other members, and I'm very proud to be a past El Serenian, and I support the No710.
Thank you. Marie Salas, followed by Janet Dodson.
Good morning, council members. My name is Marie Salas, and I live in El Sereno, and I've, it's on the records that I have been for 16 years against the No710 tunnel, and I'm just amazed as, with MTA, how MTA continues to treat us like we're a bunch of idiots, and that we don't understand that you all know what's going to happen. You know what's going to happen to the tunnel. You know that that is, the goal is to put that tunnel along El Sereno. My problem is, and I'm going to be very critical of Jose Huizar, I have supported Huizar on many events, I have given of information that may have helped him in the past, and I expect the same in return. I feel used and abused. Our community is not being properly informed about the 710, and I also feel, quite frankly, that Caltrans will be after me next to be evicted, as so many good people along the corridor have been evicted for going against the 710. So, on the record, I want to make sure that that is known to the world about the eviction process and how MTA works. I also would like to say that the El Sereno community garden is now forming. The alliances are greater, and the tide is beginning to turn, and we feel, we feel that the Measure R money should not be used for this program, for this new project, and the upcoming Measure J. These are things that we will be educating the public on, and also looking at Gloria Molina's new position coming on board soon. There's a lot of new changes, a lot of energy coming in, and we hope to get the support. There's a lot of new changes, a lot of energy coming in, and we hope to get the support from the council office and the city to work with the people that do not want the 710. It is very obvious that the 710 is not what the community of El Sereno wants, and we should be looking at Alhambra. And I don't want to put it in Alhambra, but I think it's time for the Alhambra no freeway fighters also come out and join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Janet Dodson, followed by Julianne Huizos, I believe.
Janet Dodson, I'm with the No 710 Action Committee and the Historic Highland Park Neighborhood Council. These destructive, polluting, fiscally disastrous tunnels will not bring jobs to Los Angeles, will not reduce congestion, and will saddle us all for 20 years with huge debt. If they have told you that any of these so-called alternatives will reduce congestion and facilitate traffic moving out of the ports, you have been misled at best. Anytime, any council member would like to see the information we have amassed to prove this, we have it and we are ready. How is it possible that the real alternatives, the heavy rail to move cargo quickly and efficiently through the ports, have not risen to the top? We can have heavy electric rail now, teamed with light rail for commuters, better engineering of our streets, bringing local jobs, reduce congestion, reduce pollution, better financing without foreign partnership or onerous tolls, and for a fraction of the cost of these tunnels. El Surino will be facing destruction if these tunnels are built. And then ask the people dying today in Cancer Alley, in Commerce, Bell, Gardena, Montebello, and East Los Angeles, how important is it to change our old plans and find true alternatives to the diesel trucks and, and trains that do not rise to the top of their alternatives? Have you noticed how reluctant MTA is to speak the word trucks, which we find really interesting? We know how to do this. We need your help. Here in beautiful Los Angeles, we can build a better system if we try. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Julianne Hines. I'm here representing Assembly Member Anthony Portantino, and I wanted to point out again a letter that I had brought to all of the council members on Friday, and so I trust that you received those. If not, I have an extra copy today. I wanted to come and bring the assembly members' concerns and regards. He is very happy that the council is looking to take a position and, and supports the movement of LA towards opposing any freeway or highway solutions to this transportation issue. And encourage you to go a little bit further and include F7, and it's for the following reasons. F7 really does impact LA, but more importantly, it impacts quite negatively the entire state of California. We are at a time when our state has incredibly limited resources, and to continue down this path of looking at any freeway or highway alternatives really goes against what has come before. Back in 2003, and it lists on the letter for you, the Federal Highway Administration had notified Caltrans that there was a number of local improvements that really should be done, the Gold Line and other things, and that once those projects were completed, we should reevaluate and look at, is there a need and a necessity for a freeway alternative? Not only have we not completed those projects, but the ones that have been completed have not been reassessed to identify if we still continue to need this solution. Additionally, there's been a number of studies already done in regards to the tunnel, and what they haven't clearly defined in these studies is what the benefit is and how much it's really going to cost. They've been very nebulous on these issues. The one thing that they have pointed out is back in the Parsons Study, which was the first kind of, first they called the "the silver bullet" study, let's just see if there's anything that jumps out. And then they said, oh no, it was the feasibility study, when if you actually look at it, it was not a feasibility study. But that study alone pointed out that on the first day it opens, a tunnel would open to a level of Service F. Caltrans isn't even allowed to build something if it's below a level of Service E. So to me, that was the silver bullet, and we should have known right then, the benefit is not there. It opens to standing room gridlock the first day it opens. Additionally, in regards to the price, if you look at other examples, New Jersey recently canceled a project. It was a tunnel project that was narrower in circumference and shorter in distance than this tunnel would be, this F7 tunnel would be. And New Jersey identified that it was minimum, it's going to be about $10 billion, and they canceled the project because they understood that the state of New Jersey has bigger and better priorities than that. And I would just encourage you to understand that California should have bigger and better priorities than a freeway and tunnel extension. Just to quote the, one of the last paragraphs here in the assembly member's letter, "Today you have the opportunity to stop a project that I and many others believe will negatively impact our region, does not solve a transportation problem, violates Caltrans' own traffic protocols, and is moving forward on missing information and a faulty process. It is a project of historic magnitude that will drain precious resources and scar California for decades." And so the assembly member just encourages you to continue in your push and to continue to convince your colleagues that any freeway or highway solution, and I'm not even going to call it a solution, option, is not a solution and should be stricken, and we should move on with, with options that actually will address our transportation and air quality impacts in our region. Thank you.
Alisa Almida, to be followed by Charles Fisher.
I'm not used to speaking upon these type of things, so here I go. Lisa, resident of El Surino, thank you for listening. I oppose tunnel route of F7. There are many elders of this route, one representing all of the elders that cannot come. Let me see. Alders on this route who live there over 30 years, where will they go and think of what it will do to environment? I myself constantly support many projects in El Surino. I have been on many of your projects. I've been on many committees. I support you, Weisar. But I support, I please, now it's your turn to support El Surino. Against F7 and tunnel. And this new park, this new park that Caltrans is renting, just like they rent to us, and just like they can take our homes away from us, they can take this too. It's just the lease. It's just, we're just renting, right? And you say probably Caltrans is the last one that has to say so? Metro? Hello? I think it's you two. Thank you.
Charles Fisher, if I'm reading this right, to be followed by Trish Gossett.
Good morning, Charlie Fisher, 140 South Avenue 57 in Highland Park. A little bit of history, I happen to be a historian professionally, so this is what I do for a living. My own history, I was fighting this freeway since before I was old enough to vote. That's over 40 years ago. So it's nothing new in that respect. This freeway is nothing new in that respect. It was first proposed in 1939. We may have a couple people in this room that are older than the freeway proposal. It was first protested by the City of South Pasadena in 1947. That's 65 years ago. This proposal was bad then, it's bad today, the tunnel makes no sense financially, it makes no sense transportation-wise, it just is a bad idea. It is time that it be retired. Thank you.
Thank you. Trish Gossett, to be followed by Richard Cunialas, who would be our last speaker.
Trish Gossett, Highland Park. You guys have heard a lot today, and I know that you have a lot that you've already digested, and I know all the facts have been presented to you. And all I'm saying is this, we are a grassroots movement, and we're not going away. We don't want the 710 project to exist in any form, anywhere, and we don't want it to impact anyone. You know, we're not willing to be the victims of the billionaire shipping industry that doesn't care how many families they displace, how much pollution they create, and how much congestion that they think they're going to solve that they won't. So I'm just here to tell you that we are growing, and the city of Alhambra is coming up on our radar because we know they're pro-tunnel. But we, what they haven't been told, according to Leland, well, if you read anything written by Leland Dolly, a paid lobbyist from that city that sold them this thing, you'll find out that they have no idea that there will be tolls to pay to use a freeway or a tunnel. And this has been information that has been obfuscated to a great degree from Metro, and I know I won't be paying any tolls to go 4.5 miles, and I don't represent, you know, a lot of the poorer people in the community. It's just, I wouldn't do it, especially knowing that all the benefit of those tolls are going right back into the pocket of the billionaires that don't care about us, frankly. Well, I care about us, and all these people care about us because we are, we are Los Angeles, and we are Californians. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Cunialas.
My name is Richard Cunialas. I've been in El Surino for the past 65 years, I guess, and I'm a photographer, as you can well see. I've taken pictures of everything that's happened in El Surino for the past 30 years, including Weisar going to high school at St. Legion. So, I'm Native American. I would not like to be moved. If, if somebody asked me to move, I would not like it. I have been here. Excuse me, I lost where I was. Anyway, these people are right behind me. They don't want to lose their homes, they don't want to lose their neighbors. Let's move the 710 someplace else, not in our backyard. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weisar, would you like to comment on what you heard?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you all again for coming out, and as many of you stated, this is an issue that has been longstanding for a very, very long time, and certainly before I got more involved in it six years ago, when I became a council member for the 14th Council District. Again, back in 2009, the city took the position that it would be opposed to all root, all extensions of the 710, certain routes, certain paths. Today, what's before us is those zones have come, become more specific, and they've actually proposed certain routes. In our motion today, we have now said, now that this information is out there, now we are going to oppose certain routes. And as many of you know, in Metro, where I sit as an appointee of Mayor Varegosa, I voted against moving forward with the EIR, along, I think, with Mayor Najarian from the city of Glendale. At the time, there were no specific project, I thought, and I was predicting that we were going to go forward and frighten people in different communities needlessly, and I think that's exactly what has happened. But I'm what most concerned about, that even after we go over to these other communities where I think MTA, Caltrans are not really looking to build anything, they not only went out there and frightened them with the possibility of something coming to communities, but they did a very poor job at that. I've got reports back, and contrary to one of the speakers, say that my staff is not at the meeting, these meetings, they are at these meetings. The reports I got back were that, yes, there was no interpretation for others who did not speak English, there was no technical people at these meetings who could answer technical questions. I think it not only frightened people who thought a new freeway may come through the communities, but even then, frightened them even more, they left because they had none of their questions answered, and it was a terrible job. But this is not new. Six years ago, when through a congressman's action, there was boring being done throughout the region in northeast Los Angeles, there were community meetings that were to take place, and I was quite appalled at the lack of outreach and understanding in going into communities and giving the proper information, particularly in El Surino, that has been impacted for many years where the 710 ends. They were horrible at having some public meetings there. To me, it seemed like they were mostly going through the process rather than really caring about whether they were getting the information out or not. So we are at a position today where I, I disagree that the motion we have before today to make it the official city of Los Angeles position is weaker than what we did in 2009. But, Mr. Chair, I am going to propose that we add our opposition to F7, which is a tunnel option, precisely because I've lost trust in having Caltrans or MTA to the proper outreach. Now, we originally didn't include F7 because, as many of you say today, you want information. Well, I wanted information. People tell me, anecdotally, that should the 710 tunnel be built, that it would relieve the problems in El Surino, because right now, a lot of that traffic goes into the small streets in El Surino. Huntington Drive, people use that more because they don't have that option. So I said, if that is your claim, you know, let me see that, and then we'll make a decision whether it helps El Surino or not. Once we get that information, to see if whether the tunnel improves the conditions in El Surino or not. What we did in 2009 as well, anticipating that the tunnel may come, we moved the portals over a bit where there was some property in 710 that wouldn't affect the communities, and Val Marquez brought that issue to our attention. So we've been doing things here and there to protect El Surino should the tunnel come through, but instead of us being in a position where we say, give us more information, I think the burden of proof should be on Caltrans and Metro to tell us if, in fact, the tunnel does make sense or not. Because the other way, I've lost trust that me as an elected official can even have the proper information at this time. So I think by adding the F7 option, and if the city of LA could be opposed to that, hopefully that sends a strong message to Caltrans and to Metro to say that our communities deserve better. If, in fact, our communities would like to get that information to make their own decisions as to whether it makes sense or not to build that tunnel, well, put the information out there first. You've been doing a terrible job so far. So I'll leave it at that, Mr. Chair. And I ask if you could make that amendment to add the F7 option as in our motion to oppose along with the other options. And I want to leave the other options out there as well to oppose, although Metro, as mentioned, they're going to take those off the table. It's not official yet. So we're going to take that action today in committee, tomorrow in council, hopefully. And that way, on Wednesday, when the TAC meets, at least, and it becomes official, right now it's not official, so we still want to be opposed to those options as well. If that's a friendly, if that's an amendment I'd like to make to my motion, Mr. Chair.
So that's your motion as amended?
As amended, yes.
We will ask for an aye vote on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries unanimously.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Labanche. And I think, two more points to make. This is a much stronger position than I think Pasadena has taken recently, if corrected. And secondly, I do want to say to my constituents in El Surino, I've asked for a meeting in El Surino. We're going to be working on that, and you deserve it, you're going to be the most impacted by this. And hopefully, Metro can work with us on getting that meeting in El Sereno, and hopefully they'd be properly equipped and informed to respond to all your questions. Thank you.
And thanks, everyone, for coming and giving us your input. We appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, before you adjourn, I want to introduce the pride son of El Surino, Eddie Cento. Santillan, who's the chief of all parking here.[1492.01][1492.01](APPLAUSE). I'm sure he doesn't want to see people parking in a roadway in the wrong way, he wanted to make sure it go the right way. Thank you, Eddie. Good job.
Thank you, Ed. And now we do have three public comment cards, so we'll briefly hear public comments as well. Dr. Tom Williams, followed by Maria Almeida.
These are items not on the agenda.
Yeah, these are items not on the agenda. Tom Williams?
Long time ago, a group in South Pasadena developed the concept of multimode low build. There are ways of solving the 710 problem. But we, in El Sereno, also have 60,000 cars a day on Huntington Drive, and less than, sorry, more than 92% have single occupancy. Then if you look at the bus ridership, oh, El Sereno supports MTA's Bus 78, 79. Without El Sereno, it would be a flop, because nobody from Monrovia, Rosemead, and other communities use it. It's mostly El Sereno. By the time you get to Broadway, it's standing room only. So there are many opportunities not to solve the 710 problem, but to solve the transportation problems in all of northeast LA. And we're taking the multimode that South Pasadena started, and parts of it were actually implemented. And guess what? It helped a lot. There are many other opportunities that exist in northeast LA, from the 10 to the 5, that can help LA's problems. It requires a lot of money, a call for projects doesn't work, really, it's too small, because our problems are much bigger than just the 710 or just the multimode. So I'm highly recommending that a total northeast transportation plan with maybe 12 corridors be developed. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria Almeida, to be followed by our last speaker, Adrienne Thomas.
You pronounced Almeida. Maria Almeida, resident of El Sereno, I'm here representing the seniors of the F-7 route, and I say no to the 710.[1683.23][1683.23](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Adrienne Thomas, our last speaker under general public comments.
I'm a second-generation native of Los Angeles, and my mother's, my grandparents' home was almost taken by Dodger Stadium, except that it was supposed to be public housing. And when this, and I'm a resident of Avenue 64, and when I saw this proposal, I freaked. My ancestors in Europe kept their land through three wars and three different governments, including communism, and as long as the 710 is anywhere, I'm going to worry. And as far as the smog and stuff is concerned, I lived in Pasadena when you couldn't see the mountains from PCC. I lived in Pasadena when my neighborhood was so smoggy you couldn't see anything. And I was told that from my grandmother's house about a mile from here, you could once see Catalina. Also, there are a lot of other routes. You should finish that gold line all the way up to wherever it's going, all the way to Montclair. You'd get a lot of people coming in that way. There are a lot of people I worked with that came all the way over there. The money should be used for other purposes. And the Pasadena sign on that 710 freeway should be taken off, and those portals closed up on both ends, so that the trucks and cars go onto the freeways and not into the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you.[1787.65][1787.65](APPLAUSE). Now, there are speakers, and we will adjourn this special meeting of the Transportation Committee.